Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I'll call the April 20th.
That one is tough.
Last week Rita had to tap it and get really close. I reached out.
I'll call the April 24th Select Board meeting to order. We will have one change to the agenda. We will be discussing the valet just before the public hearings. And other than that, announcements?
This meeting is being video and audio recorded. We have a lot of roadwork going on in case people haven't noticed. They, can you get the agenda?
We're gonna do county second.
Oh, sorry, sorry Maureen. On the Select Board's agenda, all of the roadwork for the coming week is listed and we are trying very hard to get updates on a regular basis. Things happen with paving jobs, weather is a factor, and other things, mechanical issues and different things like that. So we're trying to really get it out, the word out to the public as to when these projects are happening and to keep them as on schedule as possible. We also have a proclamation to remade, which I think one of the board members will read in a moment. Arbor Day is on April 26th. There is a seedling giveaway at the landfill on Saturday, April 27th and Sunday, April 28th, from 8:00 to noon, both days or when the seedlings are gone. Are you gonna read?
Proclamation? Yep. So, whereas the National Arbor Day Foundation has declared April 26, 2019, as Arbor Day, and whereas the citizens of Nantucket recognize the important historic, environmental, and aesthetic qualities which trees provide, and whereas the Select Board support the protection, preservation, and propagation of all town-owned trees, and whereas the Town of Nantucket desires to enhance awareness of Arbor Day on the island community. Now therefore, in recognition of the important role trees play in preserving our unique island heritage, we, the Select Board of the Town of Nantucket, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2019, as Arbor Day on Nantucket.
We also have a number of Board Committee and Commission vacancies that will be filled by the Board on June 19. In the meantime, there is an application online and a list of all committees that have vacancies shown here. This is also online. There are a couple of public hearings at which the Board will review applications, and then that ends with the appointments on June 19. I wanted to add one announcement that came in today. We're pleased to report that we have been designated a Municipal Vulnerability Program Community, MVP. I don't know if I said the words right, but we've been going through a process to become MVP certified, which we now are. We're very happy about that because this opens up the door for us to secure or at least apply for, become eligible for a number of grants that could benefit us with coastal resiliency issues. So we thank all the people involved in getting that to happen, most particularly Chuck Larson, our Special Projects Coordinator, and Greg Tivnan and Holly Backus, and I hope I didn't miss anybody, but other people were involved too. So we thank them very much. That's it.
This is the portion allowed for public comment for anything that's otherwise not on our agenda. Seeing none, there's no new business that I'm aware of. We'll move to approval of minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
I'm sorry, there are no minutes.
Oh, not minutes, the treasury.
It's listed, but we didn't get them ready.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Okay, never mind. Approval of payroll warrants and treasury warrants.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of pending contracts? Is there anything to point out?
I don't think so. Okay.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we're going to discuss the valet.
So Madam Chairman, Greg, maybe can introduce it. We've talked about the valet a couple times over the last few months. We now, I believe, pretty well know that the Candle Street Lot, which is where the valet has been occurring, owned by National Grid, is not available this summer. And we did get, became aware of that months ago, but we held out hope that maybe it would become available. We presented to the Board several months ago some potential options. There's no really super great second option to the Candle Street Lot because that is a really excellent location. We have tried to cobble together some ideas, and Greg's been meeting with the valet folks today. So we may have, I don't know if we have much of an update, but maybe.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, Select Board. The last time we spoke about this in February, we were optimistic that National Grid would allow us to use their Candle Street location again, as they did for the past almost seven years now. We were notified a few weeks ago by Joe Cardinal, our representative from National Grid on the mainland, who said it's looking very unlikely. National Grid has three large projects that they will need the property for to stage their gear and their vehicles and their equipment. So even though we don't have it in writing, we don't have it directly from National Grid, the Real Estate Division, we have to make some decisions now because we can't wait too long. Maybe there's a little bit of sliver of hope there, but Joe Cardinal's pretty reliable, and he's watching our backs. So in November of last year, in anticipation of this, we did present eight options to the Board that range all the way from get rid of the valet service to let's take the town lot, like everything in between. And we discussed that also again last February. In the past couple of weeks with the Chair and obviously with the previous Chair and Town Manager, we've been kind of whittling down ideas of, you know, what would be realistic. The Broad Street Valet Service is not going away. We own that, and for people who don't know what happens, from June 15 until I think September 15, three spots on Broad Street in front of the town building become valet only from 5:00 PM until midnight. The vehicles from that pickup and drop-off location are staged at the Upper Lot of Jetties Beach. We provide the valet with 40 parking spaces there in the evening. The National Grid Lot served the other side of Main Street, and obviously was very attractive to people because it was right there, right downtown and easily managed. People could see their vehicles. So the Broad Street option is not going away. However, the Broad Street option is only, right now, currently as it stands, 5:00 PM until midnight, in three spaces. And that honestly is not the most efficient valet, and it's not the most lucrative. More people went to the Candle Street Lot. Subsequent, so this is, you know, our first valet service was in 2011, can you believe it? And Valet Park of America, with representatives here this evening, have had the contract since 2012 to provide services in both locations. Since then, they built a great rapport with National Grid, and we were able to even roll out a luggage storage option for people who are coming over on the boat, but they can't check into their hotel until a certain time, someplace to store their luggage so they can go, you know, eat downtown and shop and co-mingle. And similarly, when they're leaving, their boat's not until late, and they could, you know, get rid of their luggage for the day in a safe, secure location. National Grid, not only do they partner with us, but they allowed us to use their building there to be very secure. So it was a great service. We asked the valet to do that service, and they approached National Grid, and it's been great. So we're losing a little bit more. So we do have representatives here, Ted and Tim, Ted and Tim's Excellent Venture, from Valet Park of America. We walked, so some of the options here, again, they range everywhere, but after speaking with the Chair and Vice Chair the other day and the Town Manager, we kind of whittled it down to expanding the Broad Street service to 8:00 in the morning till midnight and give additional spaces in the Upper Lot of Jetties. And we may even need to, after 5:00 in the evening, take three additional spots on Broad Street in order to, you know, supply the service, support the service. Another option was keep Broad Street as it is and take up to 20 spots or so within the Town Pier Lot. The original proposal last November was on the Fayette side, and one of the issues there is that's where town vehicles park for the daily, you know, work back and forth with finance, and obviously, it's the town lot. It's busy. It's very, very busy in the summer. So we walked that lot today to see if it was feasible and, you know, honestly, what is lucrative enough to be able to make it work, to be able to hire their staff and keep them here for the service. So I think tonight we're looking just, obviously, we have Tim and Ted here to explain what they found, but also to hear from the Board what is the desire of the Board regarding valet services, because we kind of have to start rolling it out, and they need to start hiring or not hiring.
I'm Ted Shagnon, President of Valet Park of America.
And I'm Tim Graney. I'm Vice President of Operations for Valet Park of America. So just a little background, and Greg was nice enough to give us that great introduction, but in 2012, when we committed to coming to the island, the only station that was open at that time was the Broad Street Station. That first year, you know, while we anticipated that we would do a high number of cars, we didn't really do as many as we anticipated. There was some backlash from the community at that time, and then since that time, we've really worked hard to embrace the community and do a good job, and we feel like the community itself has also embraced us. And to the point of now, currently, right now, our volume has built over the years, but also, one of the things that I've been concerned about, and I've been expressing this to Greg, is our office right now is receiving on average a dozen calls a week, and this is the off-season, saying, where am I gonna park my car? Where am I gonna store my bags? And that number can anticipate to rise greatly as we get closer to the season, if we're getting that number of calls now. So on top of that, and speaking to Greg, I know his office is also receiving similar volume of calls. So just want you to know the impact that this is gonna have. So typically, right now, in the National Grid Lot, that lot, on several occasions throughout the summer, we will have up to 75 cars on hand at any given time. So what we have to envision, and some of you may remember back to 2011, where every story in the newspaper was parking, 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 is that those 75 cars are gonna go back onto the street. And in some cases, they're gonna cause traffic congestion, where people in downtown can't find spaces, so they'll be circling and looping around. Now, some of the options that we talked about, the Town Pier Lot, that will help keep cars from going into town, where we can get some of those cars off the street before they get into downtown. And then the Broad Street option is more convenient for people who are going right downtown because it is right downtown. Our concern is, we obviously don't want to get backed up and interfere with traffic, so we need a considerable amount of staff on if we're gonna move all those cars out to Jetties Beach to make sure that we don't get backed up during the day. That being said, there's a financial cost to staffing that many people, so that's some of our concern here. What you've got in front of you is you have numbers from 2013 all the way through last season. That shows both the downtown valet numbers and the National Grid numbers. Some of the things we experienced last year, we did see a slight decline last year in our numbers overall, and that included in our, some of our restaurant contracts that we have, is some of our numbers dipped, and a little bit of that was the impact from Uber, which we look at it as a good thing, that, you know, more people are being responsible and using Uber when they're out drinking. So most of that impact was in the evening, not during the daytime. As far as the bag check goes, if, I forgot to total this up, my apologies, but the total bags that we checked in last year was 2,049 bags. So that would have resulted into roughly about 1,000 tourists' experience here. So those are some of the impacts. Ted was gonna take some time to talk a little bit about the operation if we were to run it over here in the Town Pier Lot, and then also, we can also discuss if we were gonna do the Broad Street option, if you'd like, during the day as well. We can discuss that.
Thanks, Sam. Yeah, so we looked at it as three different approaches, really. If National Grid goes away, and the majority of our volume was during the day, do we expand Broad Street, potentially 8 to 5? But as Tim said, there's only three spaces in front of Broad Street. We don't, if we absorb all that volume over there, we certainly don't want to back up onto the roadway. And number two, how do we achieve, you know, providing the baggage services still? Do, you know, do we place a shed somewhere? We have one currently, we own, in the Jetties Beach property, that we could be placed somewhere, or, you know, as we talked today, you know, maybe there's another option, another building potential, that we could still provide that service to customers on the island that really feel it's of value. Not only are we getting phone calls right now about the lack of parking, but also from people asking where they're gonna put their bags. So a couple questions we're fielding. The other thing is with the Broad Street service, people still have to travel through town, more traffic on the street, so we felt if we had another operation potentially on the other side of town, maybe that Town Pier Lot potentially, it would prevent people from, you know, getting in traffic, lower impact on emissions, different, you know, benefits for the town, keeping those cars off the street. So there's two different approaches. Maybe, and what we could do with the Town Pier Lot, a section of the lower, that right-hand section of that lot, we would just increase capacity a little bit, not necessarily, we take up a small area, but we could double park the cars, triple park the cars, because we'll have the keys, so we can actually increase capacity. So you'll have a net gain of parking space over there. All the way in upper right, right there, in that area right there.
Right in this area. And currently, I believe it was, how many spaces? Currently 20, I believe it was 27 spaces?
Well, there's six, there's eight dirt spaces that the town uses against the back row, against the tree line, and then there's a middle row with six, but we can extend those rows in either direction and add another row in there, and then on the right side, we'd have a small drop-off area and potentially increase that parking from four to six spaces to, you know, 12. So we're having, we have the ability to block cars in because we have the keys, taking a small portion of that lot, but increasing the capacity by, you know, depending on the turnover, 20 to 40, 60 cars, you know, extra a day, depending on, you know, the turnover.
So in that scenario, we would triple up this section here. These mics aren't sliding.
In this section here, we would be able to triple up cars along there, and then we would be able to double up or triple up this section here, and that would still leave this access road open for cars to flow through.
Where would your pull-off be in that scenario?
Up in this area, there's a dirt area right here.
So people would turn onto Fayette and access through Fayette?
The reason we felt Fayette was because then there would be less traffic going through the lot, which is already a little bit busy in the summertime, and because there's a right of way to a gentleman's house, I believe, that we have to be concerned with, so.
That's over this end.
Right. So by having the signage direct people in here, at least most people will go that way. That doesn't mean some customers might not come from this way, but at least we're not adding to any traffic problems that are existing in that lot already.
And then Fayette would remain two-way. It's a pretty narrow street.
It is a pretty narrow street. You know, that's certainly something that, you know, we didn't discuss that becoming a one-way. The only thing that we did discuss is possibly turning this into a one-way along here so that cars would just enter there, and then we could still have the cars exit out this way.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So you're kind of projecting 25 spots, 27, 25 spots that should be taken. How many cars can you pack in there at capacity?
Approximately 47.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think you can do a one-way from Fayette, because that's the way to sneak out of there, to not go through town. You'd be forcing everyone to go out and either take a, you know, so that's an easy way to get to Orange Street and get out.
Okay.
So anyway.
Right, I would agree. We'd want to come out and take a right, correct? Right. So, and there's enough room in that aisle to keep it two-way, and we could just keep the cars back a little bit.
Okay, so this is one option, and then Broad Street would stay 8 to midnight? Or I mean, 5 to midnight?
Right now, Broad Street being 5 to midnight, our concern is that this area is not gonna be able to absorb all the impact of the National Grid Lot.
Right.
So the other option being keeping open or doing both simultaneously may be the solution that we're looking for.
With three spots still on Broad rather than more, or do you think that you'll still need more?
Preferably, if we could do the five that takes it right up to the corner, I think that that is a better plan. Right now, it's three, and that certainly is doable, but I think that the five spaces makes it a better option.
And not only, not only for arrivals, but for departures, we have a, whether we have a call-ahead or a text-ahead system that we use, gives people the ability, because Jetties is so far away, takes, you know, sometimes seven, eight minutes with traffic to get the car back, to provide a better service and minimize the weight of customers. They can call or text-ahead so we can bring the car up and have it pulled up and ready so when they come out or over for their vehicle, it's ready for them.
Okay.
And in the event that multiple cars pull up at once, we have enough area to stage some cars while we move the vehicles down to Jetties.
So what does it look like for you guys if the town lot's not an option, and just Broad Street, with more spaces and all day?
Yeah, I'm really unsure of how the, what the impact of not having National Grid's gonna look like this year, knowing that a majority of our volume's during the day, and all those cars really downtown looking for parking spaces. So Broad Street was not really one of our busiest sites, National Grid was, so not having that in the equation, are more people gonna go and use a Broad Street location? And for us, it's more labor-intensive. Not only do we have to provide a shuttle to move our staff back and forth from that parking lot, you know, it takes a little while to drive the vehicle down and back, so there's only, you know, four or five cars in a given hour that somebody could move. So we have to increase our staffing levels, and, you know, we have to provide a shuttle, which we were already doing, but it's on a smaller scale, because the majority of the volume would go to National Grid.
So ideally, if we had our choice, you know, exactly at Broad Street, how would it look like? It would be the five spaces, we would take the cars to Jetties, we would run this as a pilot program, both programs, because the results are unknown. So, you know, one-year pilot program to kind of get some numbers, give you folks some feedback on how it's going, and so that we're doing something to mitigate the impact of the, these 75 cars back on the street. And then ideally, in a perfect world on that Broad Street, we would either, as Ted said before, either move a shed over to that area behind Town Hall, that we already have one that's been approved with the HTC, it's out at Jetties, or there's a building over there that's not being used now for the Board of Health, I believe, that could possibly be used to store bags for the bag check. We would run both operations of that, out of that area, and at least that gives some options for those people.
Madam Chair?
For this summer.
A question for the town lot, I'm trying to wrap my head around what the impacts are. Would you have to do 8:00 AM to midnight to make it work? You couldn't do like a 5:00 PM to midnight? Because how would you get the cars out of there?
The bigger impact for us is, at night, the volume isn't as large as it is during the day. At night, we slow down. Uber kind of definitely put an impact on those numbers.
I'm just picturing, you know, on a slow day, there's nobody in that lot, and everybody's circling, trying to, 7:30, 7:45 in the morning, trying to find a space, and there's gonna be, it's a lot of angry people when there's 27 spaces taken and there's no cars in them, you know, on a bad day. You know what I mean? I'm just trying to think through this.
Right. So in that scenario, right, I understand what you're saying, that there's a lot of people trying to find free parking, you mean, in that lot? And then, I don't know, we got cars pretty early. We had to, we originally started off at 9:00 AM, and we had to back it off to 8:00 AM to take care of some of the customers. Now, don't get me wrong, typically around 10:30 is when we get hit at the National Grid Lot, so at that point, that's when, really, 10:30 to 11:30 was a prime time for that lot filling up.
In this scenario, I'm assuming that this wouldn't include, I think you've had some spaces that were permanently reserved by different organizations?
Okay, so yes, we had some, we had some passes that people would buy a seasonal pass. We did that in order to save those folks some money. So yes, we would, for the pilot program, for the first year, we would say, that's not allowed, we're only taking daily customers. I would think that would be the way we would handle that.
Well, I'd be worried about those spaces at sometimes sitting empty when it could be accommodating cars with it being so reduced from 75 cars down to, did you say 40 you think you can fit in there?
47.
47.
And that is, 47 is honestly is packing it, not as like we would have every inch of that filled. So, you know, and I understand your concern there, but I think that the first thing we would do with the cars is we'd fill up the normal spaces, so those first, you know, normal 27, and then we'd start tightening them up so that it didn't appear so empty as per se.
What about if you put these into two sections? Like one is 14 and one is 11?
14 is here.
Yep.
And then the 11 was these four, there's four here, and there's three here.
Does it make sense to do just the 14 side for the pilot?
I don't think that you're gonna have enough car volume to support the staff that, you know.
Okay.
That's, those are my thoughts, is at, without increasing price dramatically, and I would think that next year, we would want to try to hold the line and keep the price the same. And that's been $20. We would prefer to keep the price the same. So just thinking of those impacts, those financial impacts.
And maybe we consider just operating it during the day, you know, 8 to 5, with only those small spaces, you know, we'd have to look at that. I'm not, you know, I'm not sure, you know, how much volume we're gonna have at night. It's really, we're not sure what's gonna happen.
There's certainly a moment to adjust.
Yeah, hopefully, you know, more volume goes to Broad Street, because that's an operation we have going.
Can I just ask, where would a shed go for luggage storage if we were using Fayette?
There are some areas that you could put it off to the side. In this particular parking lot, we'd worry about, obviously, about safety of the building and the items inside the unit, or, you know, is there a location behind Town Hall where we could put it back there? We talked today about the Board of Health building being vacant as of June. Do we utilize that potentially? Just thinking, you know, different ideas outside of the box.
So the luggage storage, that would be based out of the Broad Street entrance as opposed to Fayette?
That would be, that would be more ideal, that location, people with luggage.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, you're talking about luggage storage if, on the Broad Street valet section. It was just thrown out there that if we did get the permission to put their shed behind the town building, so it's kind of like behind where the, where we store our trash, you know, in that back area.
Okay.
It was just a thought to kind of keep the luggage system going. We have really no other place to go. I did mention that, you know, in the future, we hope to move Public Health to the fire station, but that probably won't be feasible for this year unless they get out in June.
Right.
But that might be a lot of moving parts.
Okay.
But we were just trying to solve for all the situations.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I feel like the luggage is important in terms of making it a walkable downtown.
Yeah, I know, Janet Schulte, the Director of Culture and Tourism, has mentioned that people do use that service.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Another thing that we do really have to consider in this whole scenario too, is that we do have, we will be displacing the town vehicles, like the accessories vehicles and the finance staff that come and go in order to do their business. They're currently in that dirt section along Fayette, so we'd have to make some, I don't know what that thing is.
What are, what are, I thought those were here, no?
Okay. I'm pointing right at myself. They're right here, in that dirt area. That's where like Deb Dilworth or Maureen come and go, they leave their vehicle there to go and do some work and then go out and go into the field. We just need someplace to be able We just need someplace to be able to stage them.
Sorry, Greg, are those already marked off, so that the public can't use them already?
Yeah.
Okay.
Only, only eight to four. We move those car, those vehicles to, to FG in the evening.
The, going from, you know, eight to five is not a bad idea, but then, how to get the cars out that are left there at night, you know, that's a...
You'd have to leave staff there.
Yeah.
If you have a set of keys, you'd have to leave.
Or, or the other option would be to tell, tell customers if they haven't retrieved their car by five, then they have to retrieve it at the Broad Street stand.
I'm not worried about customers, I know you guys can handle that, it's people who park their regular, you know, just coming downtown.
On the overnight, so we come in and...
But there is no overnight parking there.
Vehicles there, that are not valet customers, absolutely.
Yeah. I said I had a lot of time to think through it, so I'm trying to ask as many questions I can. I mean, I don't think we're going to know how great or terrible this is until we do it.
All right, so maybe if we do operate eight AM to midnight, so if someone, one or two cars do park there after midnight, you have to contend with it.
Not to put you on the spot, what's your feeling, Matt? Look, I go to you on transportation type things.
I think it's a tough situation. I, I'm not sure that I have an answer, to be honest.
We're losing 60 valet spots.
Yeah.
But, people will feel that.
I think we'll feel it tremendously.
Yeah.
And if we give 27 here, which could turn into 47 spots, other people who, you know, work downtown, who use this space, will feel it, right? It's 27 less spots for people to...
I mean, we, we are so over the park, the amount of, the amount of spots that were short, this is a drop in the bucket. We're, you know, 800, 1,000 spaces short a day all summer long, you know, and so, and so I think this is not, I don't know.
Without the...
We need to find alternatives, you know, we can't expect that everyone can drive down and park for free, we need to value parking on the streets, you know, we, we can't be... So, anyway, there's a whole bunch of things, and we're not going to get to that now, so I think the best we can do is, you know, sort of maybe just the Jetty's, or maybe it's just the Jetty's, and we try this on a trial basis, you know, one, you try to buff up the Jetty's, but as soon as I hear that, I think that we have to put some more half-hour parking in other areas, because you're taking the half-hours alongside the town building, which is needed to service the town building and, and do quick, you know, do quick stops, we may have to put some more half-hours somewhere else, you know, if we're going to take four or five away. So, there's more moving pieces, I think, than just, you know, sort of just your business, there's, you know, the business of the town, and how do we, you know, how do we set it up so that those spaces turn over?
Ideally, the Board of Health will move into the fire station sometime this summer to free, now, we don't think that's going to happen.
They're not going to move until fall, just, just being realistic.
Okay.
There's work that needs to be done in the fire station, they're not even moving out until June 15th, and it's not a, it's not a they're out, we're in situation.
Okay.
Plus, there is, you know, there is a lot of sentiment out there that $25 for a ticket, I'll just pay it, you know, that, a lot of times is things we hear in the parking business, just to keep that on your agenda, that some people don't think that $25 is very high, and are willing to accept that, and just park illegally anyways.
I think the...
Just another matter for you to consider in resolving the parking issues down the line in the long run.
Yeah, if you park all day for 25 bucks, and get caught every once in a while, then you're, you're better off than paying you 20, I mean, that's, you know, that's the math that's being done.
There started to be a fairly big problem in the town pure parking last year, where people would just park there and get a ticket, and there were tons of spaces taken up.
And people, you know, people are aware that towing really isn't something that happens, so it may be an option in the future that the town needs to consider as a tool to enforcing parking. Not, that's a popular thing for anyone, it's just one of those things that all municipalities use to enforce their parking.
Matt Chair, I'm, I'm fine with Broad Street extending it, and we might have to figure out some other things, like what Matt said, so I'm, I'm all for that, just, I'm not sure, kind of on the fence on this.
Um, yeah, I, I was going to say, have we looked at any other lots, like the Silver Street lot, or is just the town pure lot the only option?
This past winter, Janet and Greg and I, and a couple of, we looked at everything. We looked at Salt March Center at night, we were trying to be super creative, and just trying to come up with something, and there's just not, like Silver Street's used.
So is the town lot.
Right.
And, sorry, with Jetty's, there's just, it looks like there's too many issues with Jetty's, or can you talk a little bit more about the Jetty's option?
Um, you know, we typically only operate Broad Street at night, so Jetty's lot's typically relatively empty, and we start at five o'clock, but I've been there, obviously during the day, and there's, between the tennis courts and everything else going on over there, it, it's pretty busy over there. But, I, I don't know where else we would move them, I think that's our only choice. And again, we can, we have the keys, so we can double them up even over there, increase capacity, it's what you normally would have, and the lot's really not striped over there. I guess we could organize it a little bit, maybe put some cones out, right, you know, early morning, and, and people that are even self-parking, kind of help them maximize the parking lot. We look, and there's usually 20 or 30, you know, cars more that could have self-parked in that lot, but they can't because of the way it's configured, there's, you know, it's not really striped that well. So, with us increasing capacity, with us maybe managing that self-parking area a little bit, maybe won't have as, as great of an impact as we would think.
And Jetty's would be used as a storage spot for the cars, but it would be pick-up at Broad Street?
Yes, correct, yeah, they're dropped off at Broad Street, and the customers pick their cars up at Broad Street.
And the valet option with that one, is there a valet luggage option, oh, sorry, not valet, a luggage option?
No, there hasn't been, there hasn't been until National Grid, when the program was started there. That's why we were just trying to brainstorm a little bit and come up with a solution potentially to keep that program going from the Broad Street location.
Do we feel like there, there's a, I might have missed it, is there a good spot for the shed?
The only, the only spot could be behind the town building.
Yeah.
And, I mean, it would fit, it's probably not ideal, but it would fit, yeah.
I, I was just going to say that none of these options are great, as you can see, without the Candle Street lot. If the board wants valet parking, it seems to us, I think, as though these two programs would have to be pilot programs as they have proposed. It is, it is going to be difficult, and we are going to get, I imagine, a lot of complaints about the lack of use of the town pure lot by people who work downtown and park there. They won't be able to do that in the entire lot. Already, at 7:45 AM, good luck getting a spot down there. Maybe this will move people over to bikes and shuttle buses, but, so if we want to have the service, then unless somebody can come up with another option, that, this is it.
It doesn't preclude people who work downtown from using it, it's just now paid, which is something...
Well, if they want to be in the, in the valet section, yes, but...
Right, right, but that's what I'm saying, there will be now 47 spaces rather than 27, but you do have to pay, yes, I, I mean, but we are, we have already voted to institute paid parking downtown, so it just, it might be, just a thought, that it might be an interesting beginning of that. How much is it to park for the whole day?
$20, flat rate. $40 we've charged in the past for overnight, I'm sorry.
So, it's $20 for all day, or any part, any part of the day, and then, for overnight, we've, in the past, we've charged 40 for the...
Would you be proposing overnight in the town lot? Because right now, we don't allow overnight parking, except for the Lipa boards, right?
So, are overnight parking the same thing in National Grid? We do not allow access to your vehicle between the hours of midnight and eight AM. So, if you park with us overnight, you have no access to your car between midnight, so that there is no cars moving around, there's no action going on in the lots, so it would simply be, the cars would remain there, and that gives people who are, the, the reason that that's a good option is because, for two reasons, number one, if someone is staying, you know, with someone else downtown, and they, they need a place to leave their car, it gives them the option where they don't have to break the law and get a parking ticket, or it also gives people the option, if they've had too much to drink, to leave their car and safely, you know, get home safely and, and leave their car with us. So, I do think, I do think you, you should keep, we should continue that.
I'll make a motion to use a 27 for pilot program for one year, 27 spaces in the town lot, and just three spaces on Broad for valet.
From eight to five, I mean, eight to midnight?
From eight to midnight. So, Broad and Jetty's?
What about the luggage?
Yeah, within that motion, I would say whatever town admin feels is appropriate for, to put a shed somewhere for the luggage.
Sorry, did you say Broad and Jetty's, or no, Fayette and Jetty's?
So, Broad, to me, Broad and Jetty's are the same, so three spaces on Broad, and then 27 here, just to get something on the table for a motion.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion. I think the luggage storage is really important, so I would want to see, I would see, want to see us figuring that into whatever pilot program we have.
I think if we're going to open it on Broad, starting at eight AM, they're going to need more than three spots, or else you're going to see a lot of traffic and backup there, so I would suggest if we're starting at eight AM, that we include a couple additional spots.
I'm happy for any friendlies.
Can I send an amendment?
Yes.
To five, to you, Tom?
I would say, they think, six was in the original proposal, if, if five works.
I believe, and Greg, maybe you can correct me, but I believe five brings us up to the other corner, or is it six? It's six. I apologize for that, I believe it is six.
Okay.
Yeah, I would add six instead of three.
I accept that for that.
Your second?
Yes.
Okay. Is there further discussion?
I'm just, I'm worried, only 20% of the business was Broad Street, you know, 80% of it was National Grid, and I worry that, I'm just, I'm worried, I'm worried of how successful it'll be. I'm, I'm, I'm sort of of the mind of, you know, push it all to Broad Street if that's what we're doing, and, and not, you know, and not have to deal with the headache, you know, of the, of dealing with the town pure. The, the town parking lot, people are rabid about it, and, you know, and they get in there at 6:30 or 7, because that's their spot, and they get there, and they change their job so they can be there. And, and I think that, you know, there's some really strong feelings that I think could undermine us in some of the other things that we have to do. So, I, so anyway, I just, and I'm, you know, I don't, I don't want to spend all night on this, you know, but I, I'm a little worried that that, that they feel so strongly, I almost think that we should push it all to Broad. And I also question, I know how wide it is at Broad Street, I question whether if you had three, you could piggyback, you know, piggyback alongside, and there's still room to drive down and around if we, if we striped it properly, you know, but anyway, those are just a couple thoughts.
There's a...
I will tell you that we have, we have had to double them up at times along those three, and that's currently, right now, with only 20% of the volume, so I would say that, you know, while leaving that on the option to, you know, as, as a failsafe?
If you had six, you still might have to double them up.
There's a potential, because right now, at National Grid, we will get a rush of 20 cars in a row, and, you know, they're just back-to-back, and sometimes we even have to tell people, circle around, and we'll, you know, we'll get you in, in a second, just to keep traffic flowing. And we would do the same thing at Broad Street if we got to that point where we're getting them backed up, we'd tell people you have to circle around, which is not going to be the most customer-friendly option, but in a matter of public safety, that's what we would have to do.
Yeah.
And Matt, I also, I would agree with the concern over the town lot, I think that is going to cause a lot of people to be really upset, but imagining all of the cars going into Broad Street, at least at that point, you're keeping them out of the downtown, whereas if all of the traffic was going in, 75 cars or whatever it is, I think would also be an issue. I don't know, there, it really isn't a great solution, maybe people will start using Uber or shuttles more anyways, with valet not being as easy to use, but I don't see a lot of, we have no good option, really.
Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Madam Chairman, just want to comment, this probably goes without saying, but we're really going to have to have a good, solid plan, we'll need to work with you all on social media outreach and signage, and lots of ways to let the public know when we're getting ready to go, and I imagine we're going to need a, a way to document and feedback and tracking of the volume and, and things like that, and if it's not going as well as we hope, then maybe there's the opportunity to make some adjustments, you know, as, as we go here, because, you know, it's sort of dynamic, I guess, I would say.
It should definitely be a pilot program, I am in favor as well, so it is unanimous vote, just to close that up, but it is very much a pilot program.
One's, one's suggestion is to get a sign as soon as possible at the National Grid lot, that, you know, that tells people where it's going to be. I, I just, you know, because people will drive by and, you know, sort of, get an HTC-approved sign in the right place.
Well, they need National Grid's permission.
Madam Chair, is there a way that we could ask for really good communication between, you know, Greg, whoever, and, and Valley of America, that if it's not working, that we can, you know, mid-July, you, you'll probably tell us first?
If it's not working, we'll, we'll tell you, with the cost of labor rising, and, you know, this being very labor-intensive, we'll be coming to you and letting, you know, if the program is not successful, we'll certainly let you know.
Okay.
And, and we'll be giving Greg, you know, regular numbers too, so that he can report those to you folks, so that you know exactly how many cars we're doing for each council meeting.
Great, all right. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Just one quick comment, long-term, the goal is to get, is not to have the cars come all the way down into town anyway, so we've got to, you know, we've got to be thinking, how do you get, you know, what, what is our gondola? How do we get people into town without driving in their cars, without, you know, so anyway...
I'm waiting for you to actually propose the gondola.
I'm, I'm waiting for someone to give me the idea and make me sound intelligent.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're back to the public hearings. The first public hearing is an application for an annual wine and malt license for an Antucket meat and fish. This was continued a couple of times.
And I have to recuse because I saw them?
Okay.
Good evening. Okay, so, the application tonight is for Nantucket Meat and Fish Market. This application obviously has many layers and some history to it, so I'm going to try to do as efficiently as possible, outline where we've been, where we are, and the conditions for your consideration tonight as you move towards your decision. This, as I said, is for Nantucket Meat and Fish Market at 21 Old South Road. History-wise, the applicant has held a common vicular license for their food service at 21 Old South Road since 2016. In November 16th of 2016, the applicant was denied a seasonal package store off-premise wine and malt license by the Select Board, with which we've included the ruling for you. It was decided that a licensed establishment at this location would not serve the public need or convenience. The ruling was then appealed, as they are allowed to do by the applicant. The hearing was held by the ABCC on April 25th in 2017. Two Select Board members and myself testified at the hearing along with the applicant. The ABCC issued its decision in June of 2017 to uphold the actions of the Select Board. And again, if anything, any of those issues come up, we can certainly address those, but basically, on the basis for the denial, that licensed establishment, this location would not serve the public need or convenience, was upheld, and the board found that there are five annual off-premise licensed establishments within a half-mile of 21 Old South Road, were some of the reasons for denial that were upheld by the state. After that denial, and once they did approve and agree with our decision, the applicant can reapply after a one-year period, which obviously we have... the applicant can reapply after a one-year period, which obviously we have surpassed. Tonight, the application before the Select Board is an annual package store wine and malt license. Now, this obviously differs from the first application as it's for an annual license as opposed to a seasonal license, which is April 1st to January 15th. This would be for an annual license, which obviously is year-round with the requirement that they be open year-round. One thing we discuss on off-premise licenses that we do not on restaurants and such is the regulation of quotas that govern both annuals and seasonals. I know there's been some misunderstandings on how this works. Quotas are based on population and they're broken down into annuals and seasonals. We recently did a vote on what our seasonal population estimate is for July, and we voted at 45,000. That gives us per license, per 5,009 licenses. This has shifted somewhat where we have two licenses available as Bartlet's switched over to be an annual earlier this year. So there are now two seasonal liquor licenses available. Seasonal off, package store licenses are just broken down altogether. Beer and wine and all alcohol are considered in one group. When we get to the annual quota, that's based on the census, which is set every 10 years. The last one, it'll be coming up, obviously, next year. It's currently based on the 10,172 that was set by Secretary of the Commonwealth. And again, when we originally submitted this, it did not include Bartlet's, which now has shifted to this. As far as all alcohol licenses, we are three over the quota, meaning if anyone were to surrender their license, we could not replace it with any or take any more applications unless that resets with population next year. This evening, we're discussing an annual wine and malt package store license. We currently have one. As I said, Bartlet's moved into this category as well. So we have four, Annie's, Lucky's, Nantucket Trading Post, and Bartlet's. Those three up top are included in the five that are within that location. So that is kind of what we're looking at tonight. There is one available in this category. It doesn't mean it needs to be obviously issued, but that is what is available. Currently, this is the map that was submitted in 2016 and is still consistent today with the five package stores that are within a half-mile of this location. Old South Liquors, Meat and Fish there in the middle, Islander just kind of next door, Annie's down the street, Nantucket Wine and Spirits, and Lucky's down that street. So that has not changed as well. As we consider tonight, I know there's a lot of comments, so we'll kind of get to that. We just want to review the five conditions per law that you should use in making your decision. The appropriateness of a liquor license at a particular location, the number of existing dispensaries in town, which we discussed. Total, there are 16 package stores. Total liquor licenses, including restaurants and on-premise locations, we have 98. The views of the inhabitants of the locality in which the licenses are. So any comments, we certainly shared with you the comments that came through email and letters. Traffic noise and size typically applies to new location, which this would be. There was not an existing license at this location prior to this Meat and Fish Market being here. The sort of operation that carries the license and the reputation of the applicants. If there's any questions from there, we can have the applicant in those on public speak.
Are there any questions from the board?
I just have a question on the traffic part of it. Are we supposed to be looking at the traffic that we anticipate that that business will create?
Well, it's one of the considerations if you think something in a certain location is going to cause traffic. What I'll say is that certainly the decision prior to was the number of establishments in the area. It is still the same today. All the conditions that the decision was initially based on still exist today. In addition, we've added the medical marijuana establishment to Amelia Drive, and we certainly don't know how that's going to affect the area. But it's just one consideration. You don't need to have all of them. But these are generally what they want to have findings for if you were to make a decision against any sort of license or denial. Those are the things you want to think about if it's going to negatively impact the community with traffic.
So it is something where you can consider the traffic the business will create as well as the traffic that already exists?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Anything that would negatively impact the community or the neighborhood that it's located in.
Do you have any idea what the status is of Lucky's?
I do know that. I don't know that I can publicly state what I've had conversations with, but it's in process to be possibly transferred. So it's in process. I can't, I don't think I can legally comment on that.
And can a license just be transferred without our approval?
Oh, no, it will go before you. It's just in the process of working out those details with whomever that may transfer to. It's the same thing as a new license. It goes through a public hearing. It requires the same type of information. The only thing is it can continue to operate under the liability of the current license holder and then once it transfers, it would go to that new LLC. With a new license, you can't have any alcohol on the premises until it gets approved. So it's a little bit of difference. And then they take on the history of that license. It's like the same license, it's just a different LLC managing it. So that would be the difference. And the other, the other switch to, as far as seasonals, Cowboys did surrender their license, so that, you know, switched that number two as well. But that was not part of the consideration in this initial application.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? We should probably go to the applicant.
Hi, good evening. Sarah Alger for the applicant. I'm actually going to let the applicant himself speak with you tonight because I think he probably speaks better for his business than I do. But before I do that, I just wanted to give you this map. This map shows all the locations in, on the island, with the exception of downtown Sconsette and the little area in Maticet where there can be liquor licenses, which I think explains why there's such a cluster of licenses where there is. So I wanted to just give this to you so that you had it.
Thank you.
So just to explain, the areas that are shown in the red, as shown down in the right-hand corner, are the areas where liquor licenses are allowed for this kind of use that we have, the package store type use. And so because of that, they tend to be kind of mushed into various areas. I think Sean Reedy, who's the principal, is here and would like to address you.
Thank you for hearing our application for a year-round beer and wine license. Excuse me for reading this, but I get pretty nervous during public speaking and I just want to make sure that all my points get across. The reason we are here reapplying today is because our customers, year-round and seasonal, support it. Since applying in 2016, we have had an outpouring of support to reapply. What has changed since our last application? I think addressing the Selectman's notice of decision from our November 2016 application would be the best place to refer to. On November 16th, 2016, the Nantucket Board of Selectmen conducted a hearing on your client's application for a seasonal off-premise wine and malt liquor license at the above location. Following the hearing on this application, the board voted to deny your license application on the basis that a licensed establishment at this location would not serve the public need or convenience. A year-round off-premise beer and wine license holder concentrating on a café with seating, food made to order, and grocery items does not exist on Nantucket. I think there is a huge vacancy during the off-season for a business like ours and would certainly fill a need by the community. These beer and wine sales would be a convenience to our customers already in the market grabbing food for dinner. The market is already an open business and would not create any new traffic that a new business would create. It would in fact reduce traffic. The sale of alcohol at the market would take one less stop out of someone's trip. We would not be focusing on alcohol and this would not be a destination that someone would just be going for alcohol. It would fill the need of convenience for someone grabbing food for dinner. The board found that there are five annual off-premises, off-premise licensed establishments within a half-mile of 21 Old South Road. In the last two years since our application, the licenses in proximity to the market have changed. A beer and wine license point six miles away has since forfeited. The proximity of licenses is a direct result of the town zoning laws. The zoning requires these licenses to do business in a small number of areas, thus bunching them together. Since our 2016 application, the town of Nantucket has taken steps to finalize what their license count looks like based on their population numbers and what a community can bear. Based on population data gathered by the Nantucket Data Platform, you've requested to lower the seasonal licenses, which the data supports. The data also supports a year-round beer and wine license that has yet to be filled. I think we would be great candidates to fill this license. The board's rules and regulations governing alcoholic beverages provide that establishments are to be encouraged where the applicant offers a unique establishment compared to what exists in Nantucket at the time of application and discouraged where the proposed location duplicates what is presently located in the area. We believe that we are a unique establishment and there is a huge need for this type of business on a year-round basis. All islanders know they can count on one hand where they can grab lunch certain weeks of the year. There are also few alternatives for grocery shopping in the off-season. We provide both. We think we would be an asset to the year-round community. An alcohol license certainly isn't all that we would consider to stay open year-round, but it would certainly help in canceling out some of those winter expenses. This would be the final yes column reason for us to be open. We've made a year-round commitment by beginning to hire year-round islanders and secured housing for employees. I think being part of a community for two years, allowing neighbors to see what you're all about, seeing how you carry yourself among your peers and community is something that is important to this sort of application on Nantucket. We have an excellent rapport with our customer base here on Nantucket and would be responsible license holders. Our market in Edgar Town, which has a year-round beer and wine license, has an excellent track record and never had an underage sale. The board's findings do not support the approval of this license. In addition, the board received one letter and multiple public comments at the hearing in opposition to issuing new license at this location. Our customer base is truly what restarted this application for us. The signatures collected in support of a license in the store attests to that. We've received over 1,800 signatures, names, and addresses in support of our application. You will see we have also submitted letters of support from our Amelia Drive business community. I can understand the reasoning behind businesses that currently have alcohol licenses disagreeing with this application. It is understandable that someone would defend their business interests if they currently possess a liquor license. Unlike our seasonal license application in 2016, this application is a year-round application. We heard from license holders in opposition that giving a license to a seasonal business was similar to taking the cream off the top and then leaving during the winter when times get tough. We are here looking for an opportunity to be open, serving the community, and hiring year-round islanders. I would also like to mention that I appreciate and understand why ASAP members would be in attendance tonight. We are first and foremost a food-centric market. What we are proposing is the sale of beer and wine on the most appropriate manner possible. We have proposed using only 3% of our floor plan for the sale of alcohol. The addition of beer and wine would not become a focus. We agree with ASAP that a vision of Nantucket from outsiders should not be a Fegawi-style island where people party recklessly. We try and promote a responsible family-style image in the market. We would not be selling 30 packs of beer or promoting 9.99 bottles of wine. This is not who we are. We want to create a convenience and ease for responsible customers to purchase a bottle of wine or craft six-pack of beer while picking up dinner. This is what the alcohol consumption should look like if someone decides to partake. It is what alcohol sales should look like on Nantucket. Thank you again to the Select Board for hearing our application. I think that allowing the sale of beer and wine at the market would be an asset for the community on a year-round basis. Over the last two years of being in business, we have met so many great islanders, seasonal residents, and have felt at home here. I can promise you that we would be respectful with this license and use it in a way that is cohesive and complimentary to the community of Nantucket. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you for hearing me.
I do have one question. Can you, can you speak to the being open year-round? What does that completely mean to you? How many days would you be closed?
We close Thanksgiving, Christmas Day. We were open Easter this year due to the strike, but normally we're closed on Easter, so just major holidays.
Not, not for a week or two?
On Edgar Town, we were closed for three to four days to redo the floors or paint, but that's pretty much the extent of it. We closed for three weeks, two years, or last year because a car ran through the front of the building, but that was it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Or does anybody else have questions? This is a public hearing. I'll invite anyone from the public who wishes to speak up at this time. Just please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Kato Riordan. I just have a question about the math there. What happened to hatches?
It's within a certain proximity.
It's not very far, over a half-mile. And my opinion is that there's so many liquor stores now, that's only my personal opinion, that I'm not sure that we need another one in such close proximity, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mike Griffin. I teach up at the high school. I feel the same way as Mr. Riordan. I think that we have a saturated area here. I used to work for the Bixbees out in Sconsette for 10 summers at the liquor store out there. It handled the capacity of Sconsette and then I think you've got the Trading Post that picks up the east end of town. And Matt's not here, but maybe something further out on that end of town would be more suitable. This seems like a lot of liquor stores in one half-mile radius.
Thank you.
Hello. It's David White, longtime Nantucket resident. But in particular, over, well over 20 years in this Old South Road neighborhood. I live just up the street a bit, very familiar with everything that's going on here. And along with the other speakers, so far, I'm certainly in opposition to this license. I certainly, I have nothing against the market. I occasionally go in there. Some nice people and a nice product. But it's been stated with all the licenses that we have in this corridor. And now a marijuana store and possibly a second one. The huge development of Richmond is going on. And I'm disappointed, I think, like the board is, that the last two elections, unfortunately, the town wouldn't approve the traffic, the proposed traffic improvements, which are well-needed on this road. It's now becoming the center of commerce in many ways. And it's just, it's overkill, really. There's no real need for another liquor license, certainly a package store, on this route. And going up and down the road four or five times a day, I'm well aware of the traffic situation. The cut-throughs, one of the proposed traffic improvements was to help the people on Newtown Road. And I've been guilty of doing that in the summer to try and get around the rotary. And it just adds to the congestion and the overkill of the use of this area, which is only going to increase, et cetera. So like I say, I have nothing against the market per se, but we really don't need this. And it'll just add more to the congestion, et cetera. So I appreciate it and thank you very much for hearing me.
Can I ask you to just put up the floor plan so people can see this area that's proposed?
Hi, my name is Peter Schaefer. I wasn't going to speak. I really had no, no real reason to speak specifically about the liquor license, but I do want to speak about the fact that I was in retailing for most of my life and I know how difficult it is to survive on an island when you're only open, when you're open year-round. And I think what this gentleman's asking for, I don't think we should look at it as a liquor license and that it's not going to add traffic or anything like that. It's going to help his store survive in the wintertime and we do need him in the wintertime. We might not need the liquor license and I don't disagree with that, but we need the store to survive year-round. And so my recommendation would be that you pass this. I don't think it's going to have any impact on the infrastructure, on really anything, other than helping the store be successful.
My name is Joe Armstrong. I'm the owner of Old South Liquors. I just wanted to let you be aware that we started 33 years ago because the Board of Selectmen at that time, and this was a transfer of license, told us where we had to go. Now, 33 years is a long time, but not to infringe on Haley's, Hatches, Island Spirits, Murray's. They told us we had to come out here, and basically, there was nobody here. So, we survived, but now we have four off-premise licenses within a half-mile. If you include the Trading Post right around the corner, nobody at Farm Road. We, the public, does not need another package store, off-premise package store license in this particular area. As we have mentioned before at other meetings, we have just so many licenses all in one little area. Mary Ann Giffen made a very good point a few weeks ago in her column. Are we going to have one on every street corner? I don't think we really need them. In 33 years, we survived. We're still surviving when it comes to the winter, and that's basically what we do. The little bit of money we make, we make in the summer. To add another one, and somebody mentioned gravy, and it is, take the gravy, and that's it. Another point I wanted to make is about how a license, basically, as the chairperson spoke, cannot close, if you have an annual license of any sort off-premise, cannot close more than three days in a year without Selectmen's permission and a very good reason to do it. I've had two occasions in 33 years that I had to go beyond three days. One was a car crash, truck crash into the front of the store, and the second one was a real renovation of the whole store, took a month. But I had to come to the Selectmen for permission. They could have said no, but they were thoughtful enough to know that it was needed. But anyways, I'm just here to say I personally, not just because of my 33-year-old business, but I just don't think we need another one in this particular area. We are already crowded in. I understand how the zoning works, and that's the reason why I said that they sent me out here 33 years ago, because there was no other place to really put it that wasn't going to infringe on everybody else. But a package store also, in direct competition with one that's about 150 feet away, like Mary Ann said, we're going to, if we do this, we're just going to put one on every street corner. I don't think that the public is, needs any more of these off-premise licenses. There are plenty. The person going to this particular store or that particular store, if they don't get a bottle of wine, they go next door, where there is an established business. And basically, that's all I really have to say, but I just wanted people to be aware that you cannot close more than three days by the law without getting permission, and it's awful tough in the winter. Each one of my employees has a shovel. Thank you.
I'm an attorney. I'm representing Laura McCloskey. Laura, as you might know, owns Cowboys, which has shut down and turned in its license. So, I'm going to make the really boring argument. I actually shop at the Meat and Fish Market. I like it. It's a great place. It has lots to offer the community, but that's not the question here. It's also not the question of whether or not their customers want it, or whether it's a good convenience, or whether it fits in with their sales plan, or whether they could make a little extra money by doing it, or whether or not it's competitive or anti-competitive. If you look at the conditions or the criteria that Amy Baxter already listed for you, whether or not somebody could make money doing it, or whether or not it cuts into other people's money, it's irrelevant, right? You're not supposed to pick winners and losers. You're not supposed to protect other people. You're not supposed to favor them or disfavor them. You're supposed to look at the criteria that Amy already listed. And really, the issue here is that you have already determined that this is not an appropriate location for a liquor store, twice, within the past few years. There was the liquor application slightly up the street that you denied because there was a glut of liquor stores. Attorney Alger pointed out to you that there's only so many locations that the town is zoned for liquor stores. That's correct. However, you don't want actually every, you know, 100 liquor stores within those areas, and this Board has determined that the number of liquor stores within this area is sufficient, and that you don't want a second one. You determine that when Ed Limberg applied for a license slightly up the street, and you determined it when this applicant applied, you know, less than two years ago at this location. You also have determined it in other locations. About two or three years ago, Lemon Press came in for a package store license when they were at the former Bean location on Center Street, and it was denied a package store license in that location because there were five other licenses downtown, and the Board determined that, you know, we only have, want liquor stores in so many locations, and we only want so many liquor stores in that, in those locations. And that's really the only question, or one of the only questions you should be looking at, not whether or not there are good community service, or whether or not they're going to be open or not open. You know, frankly, they represented at their planning board hearing several years ago that they would be open, and I would love for year-round, and I would love for them to be open year-round, but that's not the question. It's not a horse trade, give us, give us a liquor license so we could be open. There's either too many licenses in this area, or there's not. So, I would suggest that you, as a Board, have already determined, one, that you don't want more than so many licenses in certain areas, and that twice you've determined that this area is saturated. The other thing I would suggest is that it's important for you to be consistent on that point, not just for this, but for the marijuana issue that's going to be a growing issue in Nantucket. If the town wants to take the position, the congestion of certain businesses and proximity of those businesses is an important legal issue, you can't abandon it for alcohol and then use it for marijuana. You either have to be consistent on that point or not. So, if you want to abandon it and, you know, change your mind, and as a general principle, you could, but you can't, you can't have it in one area and not the other. So, I would suggest that there are some really boring legal issues that you should make your decision on, not whether or not this would be a convenience, or whether or not it looks, you know, has an impact on other license holders or not, but really just the legal issue of congestion and proximity, and frankly, that you've already made this exact decision twice in this neighborhood. Thanks.
Sean Bamber. I feel the same way. You've got five liquor stores, so close. When you start selling the marijuana, you're going to have a nightmare on your hands. The state of Massachusetts is already a sanctuary state. It's a federal law. You're not even supposed to be doing it, but yet they approved it here, and when you get through with all of this mess, you're going to have selling this marijuana. You've got enough liquor stores now. And the other thing is, we had Fair Winds. Does everybody know what Fair Winds is? They were at the real estate brokers thing about a month ago at Bartlett Farm. Nantucket has got more people on suicides than any other town in the whole state of Massachusetts. It's just ridiculous that they're going along with the marijuana that you approved here. It's crazy, and I can't see any more liquor stores. There's so many now here. I've got nothing against these people doing it, but I think it's ridiculous. Okay, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I'm Mary Walsh, and I own Nantucket Wine and Spirits. And first of all, I just want to thank the Board members for listening, for making time available to listen to the, to the issues around this. And I just want to briefly say that I also would hope that this Board would uphold the decision that, that has been made by the Select Board regarding this license, Ed Limberg's license, the license that Daria applied for in town a number of years ago. And I, as the readers know, I like this market. I shop in there. I like the people in there. I would love to see them stay open as a grocery store year-round, and I think that would be a great asset to the community, but I don't see where, I can tell you that, that beer and wine is not going to make a difference in an income in a store, nor should that be, as Stephen just said, a guideline for giving out a license. If we gave out, if you gave out licenses to everyone that you just liked or thought would do a good job or had a beautiful store, it would be just a free-for-all in that area. So, I would just like to, you know, say that I, I hope the Board will stand up for and stand behind the decision that, that you have made regarding the previous application. Thank you.
Carrie Turner, island resident for about 30 years. I've owned a couple of businesses here, and I'm here to agree with everyone else that's come before me against the passing of this license. I just believe that from a previous business owner, it's hard to make a go of it year year-round, and I want to support the people that have made a go of it year-round for years, and support the people that have, the winter months are re-lean for all of us, and just don't want anything to affect those people that have had the stamina to last all the years of the year-round community. Okay? Thanks.
Anybody else? I guess I'll close the public hearing. Oh, yes, before I do.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure everyone had a chance to speak. I just wanted to correct just one thing that I think was a misstatement and probably unintentional. When we were before the planning board for this application, we did not represent that we would be open year-round. We said that it was our hope that at some point, once we saw how things would go, that we could be open year-round, but we never represented ourselves as a year-round market. Now that we have two years under our belt and we see how things go, we think it's going to work year-round, we're hopeful that it is. This is certainly part of why we're here tonight, but it isn't the whole reason. As Sean said, he's already secured housing for all of his employees and is hiring year-round people. So, I just, I just wanted to make sure that you didn't feel that we had somehow misrepresented this. Another thing is that while Mr. Cohen is correct that you're not supposed to look at anti-competition and who can make it and who can't, you do have the ability to look at the type of operation that's proposed, the convenience and views of the inhabitants. And I think the fact that so many of the people who have shopped at the market have indicated and asked that we come back for this license, the fact that this isn't per se package store the way some of the other stores are in the area, Mr. Armstrong's establishment, Ms. Walsh's establishment, those are pure package stores. This really is, as you can see from the floor plan, it's a grocery store with a very, very small area that would be dedicated to beer and wine sales. And we're very different also from the Porla Tabla application that was denied down the street. That was an extremely small store. It was just going to be a wine and cheese store. I mean, this is a, this is a grocery store where people come to shop for the food that they need to make a meal, and it would be a convenience of the customers to be able to pick up a bottle of wine or, or some beer to have with that, not have to make multiple trips. I know you will look separately at traffic, noise, and safety, but that was something that was thoroughly vetted at the planning board level at the time that the application went through. We did present as having alcohol at the time because we were required to do that, and there are hours of operation and things like that, and our planning board decision addressed that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I kind of thought that, I'm Hall of Driscoll, the owner of the island liquor store. I kind of thought that everything had been said, so I did not plan to get up and say anything until Mrs. Alger just said that the Limberg decision was, it was actually, I think, a big part of the decline of that application was because of proximity. It was, the public's need was being served by Annie's, which was, I believe, almost exactly next door, and my issue, and I also love to shop at Nantucket Meat and Fish, but I can't get past the fact that they're 600 feet from my store. I had a customer of mine who was a surveyor, and I said, "I don't want you to take out the, you know, the spying eye or whatever, but can you give me an idea?" He said, "Give me a couple of minutes, I'll call you back." Called me back, he said, "From the middle of 15 Old South Road," which is my location, "to 21 Old South Road at the meat market, it is 600 feet. From the middle of Annie's, which I believe is 14 Amelia, to Nantucket Meat and Fish is 600 feet." And not to mention five other, there's altogether five of us within a half an hour, a half-mile circumference. Judy is six tenths of a mile. I don't know how, six tenths of a mile as well, so now you have it to seven. I don't know. I'm looking at a competitor, so I'm sure that that doesn't bode all that well, but the Limberg decision, which was denied and upheld for their appeal, was, I believe, mostly because of proximity. That's all I can say.
Thanks. Okay, if there's not anything further, I will close the public hearing. What's Board discussion? What's the pleasure of the Board? Oh, I closed the public hearing.
I was waving.
That's okay. That's all right. I sent a letter. Okay.
I'm sitting here just listening to everyone. Everyone is saying that, you know, they go to Meat and Fish and they like it, and they probably do, but I go there to buy coffee sometimes, and I own a coffee shop, so I definitely really like Meat and Fish. Usually iced coffee in the summer. I think Meat and Fish will be successful regardless of they have a license or not. That's not what we're going to make our decision on. I don't think anything, some things that stick out to me on, kind of on Amy's, how you can deny a license or approve it. To me, it's, nothing has changed. I don't see any, there's not any extra public need that needs to be served, and traffic, I'm not, I could go both ways on the traffic. It could help out traffic because it's a one-stop shop. It also could be, they could be more busy and bring more traffic there because there's, maybe you want to go there more because of this extra service. It could kind of go either way. Those are my couple initial thoughts, just to get us going.
I would agree on the traffic, to be honest. I don't think the impact on traffic either way is going to be significant, and I think that Green Lady is going to have a far more significant impact than serving liquor at this scale. You know, I just, I really do, I think it seems everyone in the room almost has a consensus that we do like Meat and Fish. I do want to support, particularly in light of what has happened in the past couple weeks, small, family-owned businesses that give us options and alternatives for where we buy our groceries, but looking at it sort of black and white, the way we're supposed to be looking at, meant to be looking at these liquor licenses, I can't really find an argument for it really filling a need by the community, and particularly, to be honest, in the off-season. I think a seasonal license would actually have made more sense, but an annual license in the winter, I can't find an argument for the fact that it does actually fill a need within the community.
Yeah, I was just going to echo kind of the same thing, that, you know, I want to support a year-round business and have them thrive, and like you said, support somebody that could be a grocery store, but we're here to decide a liquor license, not, you know, if the grocery store part should be open year-round. So, that's, you know, I read through the appeal process, and they clearly stated a licensed establishment at this location would not serve the public need. at this location would not serve the public need. And that's kind of what we're tasked with looking at. And seeing that there's other stores in this location, I don't think there is a need. But I would like to see this business be around year-round.
I also think that potentially the need could change in the future with projects like Tacoma Green, with projects like the Richmond one coming online, because you have Amelia's walking distance from both of those. But again, the current need, again, I don't see that it really fills that need now.
I also love this business. I loved how they stepped up with the closure of Stop &amp; Shop. Well, not the closure, but the strike. And I do... I appreciate the idea of this being year-round. That actually sways me a little bit towards it, that they're committed to going through the slow season with all of us since being open. But I am having a struggle with the actual need. I think the convenience would be nice. I think the fact that we didn't vote for this... The sidewalks lost by 16 votes is unfortunate because then you could walk between the Islander and Meat and Fish, and now you can't. But I also am concerned that we only have one left to give and that there could be a location that would better serve the community in terms of that final available license.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Not really, but I will. And I do this very much with a little bit of a heavy heart, but I would make a motion to deny the liquor license.
Findings?
Just with a denial to make sure that we state and discuss the reasons behind it pursuant to the list that we discussed.
Yeah, so I would base the denial on there not being a specific need for the community. That I think for me would be there in this area, there's a saturation of similar businesses that meet the need. And although I appreciate the business model that they're doing, it doesn't seem it's distinct or unique enough to, again, meet a different need than what's already being met.
Is that better, Amy?
Yes. Yeah, just so we state that correct.
So can I second that motion? Do I need to...
Yeah. All those in favor of the denial?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'm going to abstain. That's three to zero.
Okay. And I'll just state with a denial, we will issue a letter with the findings to the applicant, and they will have five days to appeal to the ABCC should they decide to do so.
Okay. I'm dressed like a zoning ma'am. I think we can go forward with just opening the next public hearing and getting a motion to continue it. Yep. Or reopen the public hearing. And can someone make a motion to continue to May 22nd?
Motion to continue to May 22nd?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed motion carries unanimously. And we'll wait for Rita to return to start the public hearing on Sandwich. Okay, we'll open the public hearing on... Oh, sorry, guys. On Sandwich Road. Is there anybody here to discuss this?
Eleanor, maybe could? Or do you want me to give it a try? Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is a fairly standard taking. You have seen hundreds of these probably by now. I can explain anything you need to know about it, but it's pretty much in your packet. There are four parcels totaling about 9964 square feet. You may have noticed there's a little 25 by 30 square at the end that is excluded from the taking parcels, that abuts two of the properties. And that was to accommodate... Stephen here?
Yeah.
To accommodate, I believe, the riders who own the largest now vacant parcel to the bottom, so they could retain the potential to have potential future eager access to Monomoy Road, which may or may not be something that is going to happen. That's completely unknown. But if that were to happen eventually, it would be... There would be easements and so forth. And we always take care of that at Conveyance. And REACT would vote... REACT, meaning Real Estate Assessment Committee, would take a look at review and vote on that as a part of the conveyance. So...
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Any questions? I think that there are some interested parties here. Did you guys want to say anything?
I mean, yeah, I'm Brian Ryder, and I'm here speaking for my father, who's sick. Basically, the idea with this lot that's been empty all these years... He's owned it for over 30 years. And there's four kids in the family. So they're in their 80s, down the road. It will probably be subdivided, and we just didn't want to lose the access, the Sandwich Road access, depending on how it's subdivided down the road. But we just wanted that option down the road to be able to use that as an access in the future. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Okay. Close the public hearing. It's a pleasure.
I guess I have a question, just a clarification. There's was... There's three parcels here, and we had a letter in the packet from Mr. Dooster from 13 Monomoy. Who... Will you explain what's happening?
There are actually four parcels. One of the teeny-weeny ones, if you look on the screen, is that hot pink one.
The pink one, yeah.
I colored that hot pink so it would stand out because it's so tiny. So Mr. Dooster owns 13 Monomoy. And I believe Stephen Cohen represents him as well, so he could certainly probably elucidate us more on that. But I didn't know anything... I hadn't frankly paid attention to the 2018... That an article that was put forth, Citizens War, an article that Stephen Cohen put forth on his behalf to also take the northerly... The northern portion of Sandwich Road, which winds its way around to Monomoy. And that article did not pass. The finance... The FinCom did not recommend... Make a positive recommendation. I believe the riders had given some input. And my understanding is that this little, again, 25 by 30, about 750 square foot parcel at the end there was sort of a compromise in terms of this taking, which this was approved at 2017 town meeting. So Mr. Dooster was just saying, "I would like to be able to..." You know, he was sort of... I feel maybe Stephen might do a better job explaining this because it's his client.
Well, we closed the public hearing, though.
Oh, you have closed?
We closed the public hearing.
All right. Well, then I will do my best to... So Mr. Dooster was disappointed that that article didn't pass, that it didn't get a positive FinCom recommendation, it didn't pass. And he just felt that it was unfair, frankly, that, you know, the riders and others are getting to acquire these parcels and merge them with their lots and do what they eventually want to do with them. And then they're not... He and Six Sandwich, which is across the way from 13 Monomoy, are not allowed to do so. Now, Six Monomoy... I'm sorry, Six Sandwich has a driveway which winds its way up to Sandwich Road and then around to Monomoy Road, which you can see on the aerials. I actually brought some with me if you want to look at it, but it's...
I looked at that.
But yeah, so that's... And there are other... There's, I believe... I actually drove down there today. There, I think there's two, maybe three other properties on the easterly side of... Sort of southeasterly side that do have access onto Sandwich Road, which is a traveled way up there.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Matt?
Sort of, yeah. I just want to make sure we're not going to get in the middle of, as we've had in other situations.
No, this says no bearing on that. Frankly, that article didn't... It didn't get a positive recommendation, didn't pass, and this is... This is not... It's frankly not germane.
Yeah, okay, good.
It seems connected, but it's not because you're looking to approve something that was approved at town meeting, and this plan was drafted in this way to accommodate the concerns that were presented with that other article.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. We're back to Town Manager's report for the budget reports.
Okay, we've got the first group of third-quarter budget reports for fiscal '19, General Fund, Island Home, and Solid Waste. And I think we are starting with the General Fund with Director of Finance.
Good evening. Thank you. So the third quarter ended March 31st, and we're here to report that revenues were up 7% quarter-over-quarter. We're relatively flat year-over-year, but I still am very confident that we're going to be okay come the end of the year. Primarily, the 7% was driven by about $1.4 million increase in real and personal property taxes year-over-year. It was about 100 and... Let's see. It was about $177,000 in motor vehicle excise tax. And as I consistently let everybody know, the first quarter or the first excise tax commitment in... Which goes out in February is usually the largest. And last year, we sent out $18,350 bills in that excise tax commitment in '18 and billed $2.2 million. This year, we sent out $18,878 bills, which is an increase of 528 bills, which means there are certainly more cars being registered and principally garaged here, for a total of $2.35... Just over $2.36 million. So there's about $140,000 increase in the first excise tax commitment year-over-year. Rooms and meals, which are another really kind of an indicator of how the economy is doing on the island, because we are dependent from a tourist perspective, we're up 7% and 6% respectively in the third quarter, still tracking. They both have exceeded the original budgets that we had estimated. One concern that I... We will note, and you will see it in the Muni Watch, is that building permits seem to be lagging. We're pretty close on a year-over-year basis, but this last quarter, we were down on a quarter-by-quarter basis with building permits. So it's something that we are... I don't believe we will have a significant problem since we're only about $130,000 away from the budget for the fiscal '19, but it's something that we're looking as we move into tax rate setting process for fiscal '20, whether or not we'll be able to alter that budget much from where it was this year, which we may have to make some adjustments in other revenue lines to be able to get to where we thought we needed to be for fiscal '20. So it is something internally that we are certainly paying very close attention to. Expenditures, we were up about 6% on the quarter ended, primarily driven by the impact of all of the collective bargaining agreements that have been settled in the last fiscal year and a half, as well as increased planned expenses, some of those being strategic plan and staffing study, which were in... Where we're done and paid for through the third quarter. Legal fees are substantially higher, but I think the Select Board is well aware of the increased legal fees that we've had to pay with some of the other developments, primarily Surfside Crossing, that's been coming out of the General Fund legal budget. So at town meeting, we did make a transfer in of approximately $250,000. I expect that we may need to do a 33B transfer between now and the end of the fiscal year to potentially cover more expenditures in legal. Overall, the budget is still tracking from an expenditure side, very close, and I still think we'll end up in a positive balance at the end of the year. The rest of the report that we typically have done for the board really kind of highlights all the capital spending that we've done with... We've done the top 10 capital projects that have been... Or capital payments that have been made through March 31st. Some of those are one-time, i.e. we put the... We completed the 17 Washington Street land purchase before the end of the quarter, so that was included in this as well. Financing activity on page... Next page, showing the amount of debt service that we have outstanding over the next few years, as well as what we budgeted this year and be $7 million. We will be doing another round of borrowing at the end of May, which is typical. Most of it will be bands. Some of it will be short-term that we will actually permanently borrow in the beginning of the new fiscal year. We've done some analysis, and there are some things that we could take to permanent borrowing. And if, based on the projections, we could save between $250,000 and $300,000 in interest by borrowing them permanently in either July or August versus waiting until November, when we normally do, just because of some uncertainty with what the Fed may end up doing. So overall, again, the General Fund is still tracking very close to where we would expect it at this time, and I expect at the end of June that we'll be able to report extremely favorable and positive results again this year.
Most interesting thing to me was 500-plus vehicles.
I thought you might like that.
It's 2-point-something vehicles per dwelling. So yeah, that's the most... We're worried about traffic, and we're adding 500 cars a year, anyway.
Well done, as always, Brian. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I just want to elaborate slightly about the legal. Legal expenditures are off the charts, as Brian mentioned. And he mentioned Surfside Crossing, but it's not just that. It's marijuana, Tacoma Green, Richmond, the Grand Swap with the Land Bank, SBPF. There's some amount of labor. Beach Palm Village was an issue. So there's just a lot of real estate matters going on that are costly, that are outside of the retainer. There's some labor that's outside of the retainer, and things like marijuana are outside of the retainer. Some of that will be able to be recouped through agreements that we have with some of these parties to pay our legal fees. And I am pinning hopes on Ken Bogrand, our real estate specialist, that he will help lower our expenses too, because he will be taking on some of these things that Town Council is doing now because we don't have anybody to do them. But I just wanted to mention, this is an unusual year for legal.
It's very high.
Madam Chair, is this something we need to look at for the budget, or do you think it's kind of an out year?
It's an out year. It's hopefully something of a one-off, but there's just a lot going on.
I'm not so sure it is, Liv, because I think we're under... There's so much money to be made. We're under increasing pressure. The island is under more and more pressure for some of these things. So I'm not... It may go down... It's going to go down some, but I don't think it's going to go down to what it was three years ago.
Well, I'm just pointing out the items that are not long-term, that have cost us in the past year or two, that are going to be ending soon.
Matt, you're saying there's going to be another... I don't want to say Surfside Crossing, but those type of things, marijuana.
There's so much... There's so much money to be made. There's so much... You know, we're under so much pressure. You know, the island is just heated up to a whole different level. And the people coming in, it's not just an individual or a couple of rich individuals. Well, now, you know, now they're being bought by pension funds and investment groups and, you know, the whole level of sophistication is beyond what it was a number of years ago. So I just think it's... You know, we're outgunned. So I wouldn't be surprised if it stays high for a while.
Especially, I would agree, with marijuana and things like Skonset not going. Those aren't forever, but they are in the near... aren't forever, but they are, in the near term, going to be continual expenses.
Island Home.
Howdy, welcome. Okay, so, some of the notes I have for the, for the quarter three and year-to-date. For revenue, for the first nine months of fiscal '19, our revenues were down 12% off of the same timeframe in fiscal '18. Of that 12%, more than half of it came in the first quarter, when we had closed beds that we just reopened, so we started out kind of slow, and the census has grown back from an average of 31 and 1/2 in the first quarter up to between 34 and 35. If you look at the same census over the first nine months of '18, it was 37. So we're making headway, I would have hoped that it would have come back, but that census and stuff is a, is a fickle thing, but we, we're making headway, we're getting back there, it's just slow-going, so that's where we're taking the hit revenue-wise. But some things within that, as far as regular rates and stuff, for quarter three of '19, our Medicare rate was $418 and change. Quarter three of '18, it was $497, so about $80 more. Again, that's Medicare, which we average about between 2 and 3 per month. Medicare can go up and down depending on whether the rehab is the base or nursing care is the base of what we're putting down for reimbursement, and that can fluctuate from time to time. On a good note, it's only three patients out of 35, so it doesn't have a bigger impact. Medicaid rates for quarter three of '19 were $210.03. Same quarter in '18 was $208, so we did see a little bit of an increase there. And I think that's just a combination of the rates fluctuated a little bit. If you look at the scale of rates within Medicaid, we have 12 rates, and though some of the rates went up at the last turnaround, some went down a little bit, so it offset where your average rate maybe fluctuated about 70 cents to the positive. But for us to go up to $2 means the acuity of the patients we have within the Medicaid segment is increasing, and we're capturing the revenue the best we can, which is a good thing. So year-to-date booked revenue for the first nine months is coming up about 250,000 short. Projected, based on the first three quarters, we're going to end up probably around 330. I think it's going to be a little less than that, because if you're looking at the projection based on the first nine months, we took a big hit in the first quarter, and we've come back, so I don't think it's going to probably be quite that much. But we're, we're projected to come up short in the revenue end. Average daily census between the two years, year-to-date, year-to-date '18, we were just shy of 37. Year-to-date '19, we are just about 33 and 1/2, but again, quarter one really stands out, we were just over 31 and 1/2 average. Quarter two and quarter three, we're getting back up into the 34, 35 range. On the expense side, for the first three quarters of fiscal '19, we're down 3% in comparison to the first three quarters of '18, and it represents 69% of the annual budgeted expenses. A couple of items within that are, we had a higher-than-average cost in repairs and professional services, and we offset some of that by the reduction in payroll and insurance reductions. Mainly, the payroll reduction was because we have, I mean, our professional services up because we're using two travel nurses, so that's going to draw an increase in that line item. On the, on the offset of that, we're saving it on the payroll side, because they're not employees of the town. So, we transferred money to, to offset that, some of that. Year-to-date wage and related costs are under budget fiscal '19 by just, just under 300,000. Total expenses are coming up just under budget by about 500,000. And again, the professional services is the big thing that stands out there. I mean, based on the year budget, we're still under, but if you, again, project that out over the rest of the year, we'll probably end up a little high there, and it'll be offset by the lower wages. So, you know, I mean, the revenue thing is a work in progress, but at least from a cash flow perspective, the, the expenses are covering the loss in revenue, so if you want to look just from an operational standpoint, we're not in the red in that respect. Any questions?
I said one, one good question, it's not really on exactly the financials, but the 37 to 33 in the census.
Yeah.
Is the phone just not ringing? Are people, are touring, they're not choosing to put their family there, or is it just...
They're touring, I mean, I think some of the things that are affecting the demographics of the census are, again, I mean, with the building being older, private pay has taken a hit over the last two or three years, like our private pay census. It might be that, I don't necessarily believe that there's less private pay patients out there, but for the money they're going to spend, they could probably provide the care in home. You know, do they want to spend that type of money going to a building that might look a little clean and comfortable, outdated, a little old? I think that is probably playing a factor. I mean, it's easy to tell you, like, down the road, if, if we do something and build a new building and it's, you know, state-of-the-art, would that attract more? Absolutely, I believe that will happen, but that's, that could be years away. We do get calls, I mean, we, I had got two referrals over the course of the last two weeks that would have been great candidates for us. They were very acute, and unfortunately, both of them ended up passing away in the hospital before, they had accepted bed offers. It just, it didn't work out that they had got there for us to rehab them and get them home. So, I mean, I mean, on a good note, when, when we reopened all those beds, when we started out at 30.5, you know, the start of July, we've slowly seen the census climb back to an extent, it's just going a lot slower than I would have expected. I would have hoped that we, by the end of this year, we could have got back to 37. We're still hovering around 34 and 1/2, 35. But it is moving, it's just kind of creeping along.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, Rob McNeil, Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. As you see in summary, the revenues for the first nine months were up slightly about 8% compared to last year's. Tip fees were slightly down. Landfill, landfill fees are dramatically up since this time last year, because the invoices were sent out earlier than last year. Just a note that the fees are basically, were kept the same, did not increase this year. We are looking at that moving forward, and that's part of the charge that we're hoping to come back with next year. Expenses, we are, total expenditures excluding debt service were down 11%. Then freight, professional services, and collection and disposal, professional services There is a bit of a discrepancy in the report, just to highlight that, is the difference between year-to-year comparisons should be noted, that we are tracking things a little bit differently, we're booking it differently than we have in the past, more in line with the specific line items in the budget, to be able to create data that ultimately we can better inform decisions moving forward. So that's why you might see some major sways in year-to, year-to, year-to-date comparisons with previous year. Obviously, we have increased the efforts in hazardous waste collection, and opening it up to commercial folks has resulted in a expected impact to expensers. We'll continue to do that as well. As I mentioned, we had 24 participants, commercial participants, specifically at our last event alone, and year-to-date there, we've spent $68,000 for hazardous waste collection. This is a $40,000 increase from last year.
How does 24 compare to other times?
Average at an event last year was four.
Oh.
So it basically took all of last year's commercial participants into the first event.
And what do you think that, why was that so different?
The fee was waived by the board last year.
So just the fee?
In December.
Wow.
Yep. So we're looking at that, there's some potential impacts there, not just cost-wise, but just participants, and trying to, work, we're trying to work through the system to create a process that ultimately works for the island. So there's some, there's some requirements that commercial entities have at the state level to register as hazardous waste generators, there's different categories depending on what they generate, what they have on store, in-store, and vice versa. And then we need to take a look at having people that are bringing us larger-than-household quantities sort of let us know ahead of time, so that when our vendor shows up here, they have adequate ability to handle what's expected to show up. So we're going to be working through that.
Madam Chair, I think it's a great thing that we're doing this, but I think, I was speaking with Rob a couple of weeks ago, I think we're the only place that you've ever heard of that waives all the fees.
Well, the state, we've been talking to the state about it, and they were a bit flabbergasted that commercial entities that charge money for business are able to dump for free. So, again, we're, we're looking at it all, it's a, it's a piece of the enterprise overall, so I think ultimately, it's not my decision to pick winners or losers, but to provide data and have the board make a decision. I think we need to take a look at, you know, handling our waste, and when I say "our" waste, it's sort of island's waste. If it's generated by a business, you know, there's, there's more to talk about. The biggest thing here that has really been discovered is that the state has a requirement to have businesses register if they are generating hazardous waste, and essentially, they need to track it and report it to the state, and that's not happening. It's, there are very few that, that are complying with that. Let's, let's put it, out of the 25 who showed up at the event, and one we turned away, the one we turned away was actually the only one that was registered with the state. Just showed up with far too much of a quantity for us to handle at that point. So it's sort of growing pains with this new change, and we definitely intend on getting to the bottom of it and trying to continue to encourage commercial participation for all the right reasons. Try to get this stuff off the street and off the island.
Yeah, I would say in the short term, I think it's worth it. I do think ultimately it's chargeable, so it is flabbergasting that, you know, it is free, but at the same time, we're doing, there's a couple other things going on at the landfill, like some of the landscapers' waste that is also free and chargeable. So I don't think it's inconsistent, but I think more importantly, it's 24 businesses that aren't storing that, that waste in a basement or somewhere where it's vulnerable to flooding or storm or anything like that. So I think at least in the short term, it's worth it.
Yeah, I served on a board where we started making things free, because so much was being left in the moors. You know, and, and we think, okay, you can just pass the charge along, but it's pretty expensive. When you hire someone to come and pick up all the junk that your employees have left in the house after the summer, you get a bill for thousands of dollars from the haulers, and because it costs them that much to do it, you know, if they added that much more on to, you know, sort of my bill, then, you know, then there's, you know, I wouldn't, but there are other people who would say, well, I can't, I can't spend $1,000, I'm going to just dump it.
Yeah.
Which is what was happening previously, and people were burying it and dumping it. So I just think, you know, we kind of have to figure...
Or leaving it sitting in their yards.
Yeah, exactly. So, and we, and I think we have to do, look at it, have to look at the total picture and figure, how do you make it enforceable and equitable if you're going to do it? If you're going to increase the fees, you've got to charge everybody and figure out how to do it fairly.
I just had a question, the, so the changes in the professional services and the freight, where those numbers shift quite a bit, that's just because of the way that you are...
It's a coding change.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, now we're back to Select Board reports and comments. We're finalizing the action emission statements for coastal resiliency and cannabis advisory committees.
Yes, I mean, having been a part of sort of writing these with Libby, I'm, I'm happy with where they're at, and I think, again, both committees can work to make some changes in the first couple of meetings, if there's anything that we have left out, if there's additions, I think that can be changed. One thing that Libby and I did speak about a bit is, I would be okay with the three members of the public not specifying that they have to be year-round, but leave it open, see who the applicants are, and make it clear that whomever it is has to be available. So that was a proposed change to what is here, but I'm open to suggestions or to keeping it.
Yeah, I was just excited to see the addition of the advisory committee of non-voting taxpayers, because I think that's an important perspective to have on this group. So I'm also in favor of taking out the year-round requirement, as long as they can attend the meetings regularly.
Or call in, if it's in the off season.
That doesn't qualify for a quorum.
No, but they can participate. There's probably, there...
So that we'd have to consider that when we do the appointments.
Yep.
I think you guys, you guys did great work on it, even from the first get-go. And I agree with Rita that, once you get going, you'll make some changes. You don't know what those are until you get into it, whether it's add something to the charge, or change the dates or timeframes.
I was just going to comment that we did get some input from the coastal, from the Nantucket Coastal Conservancy, and I tried to work some of that in, and that, and so the highlighted items came from, I don't really, I'm still not quite sure what it's going to be called. There was Coastal Resiliency Advisory Committee, Work Group, Takeout Advisory, I don't know. So that's something you're going to have to finalize. There had been a prior request to have a member of the Harbor and Shellfish Advisory Board on, so that was added, the member of the ACNVT Non-Voting Taxpayers Group. There had been a question about whether or not, we initially had on here a member, a designee provided by the Nantucket Conservation Foundation, and there was a question about why them? And that was simply because they asked, and they are by far the largest landowner of coastal property of the island. They hold way more property than anybody else, including the town and the land bank. But it doesn't have to be them, it could be, and I, so I just had a suggestion, if that is not what people want, an established island conservation group, and then we can just figure out who comes from there. I added this independent scientific background kind of qualification. There was a question about staff, staffing, other staff is needed, there, I just didn't list every single person that might help the committee at some point, but we could certainly add in the National Resources Coordinator, because I'm sure he'll be involved from time to time. And then there was just a question about the coastal resiliency plan, is it done, is it not done? What is the committee exactly going to do with it? And I think really what the committee is going to do is help guide the finalization of it and make recommendations to the board. There was a suggestion about getting together a kind of a team of scientific advisors, that would be a great step for the committee to work on. And then one thing I didn't have in, which I sort of thought was, would just happen from time to time, but it could be in there, is to provide regular updates to the board and town admin, so I just added it. So I think when you're ready, unless you want to hear from anybody or have some more discussion, these sort of highlighted things just need to be nailed down, including the name.
Okay. Yes, please, just come to the mic and state your name.
Hi, Maureen Phillips for the Coastal Conservancy and also for the Maticat Residents Association. Thank you very much for this, and thank you for the responses to the questions that the Coastal Conservancy sent in, just trying to get a better feel for things. And clearly, this is going, this is a developing thing, and we really haven't done anything like this before, where it's, it's so super critical to what we're doing, and, and we're, we're kind of making our own way on our own. We just, we really appreciate it, we are really looking, now, something you just said, Libby, I wanted to just clarify with you about... Libby, I wanted to just clarify with you about the actual plan, is I know, we were supposed to get a draft by the end of April, but is, are we going to wait till the group gets going to look at a draft, or like, what's the current plan?
I think Chuck told us this week when he was here, it's looking more like beginning of May, mid-May now, and has been pushed out a bit. But I think the idea is that, is to get the committee in on the plan ASAP.
Okay.
And that it won't really get finalized until the committee has had a chance to vet it and present recommendations for how it would be finalized. What we talked about this week is that this sort of final product that we're talking about is going to be more of a framework.
Okay.
That will be able to be built upon, and the built-upon document would be the final plan, with the committee guiding it and giving input on it and making recommendations and doing the other items that are listed here. So I don't think we should think that, I think a year ago, we thought we might have a final plan, a final final, but I think as things have evolved, we now are realizing that this plan that we've been working on, it is a plan that we're working on, but at this point, it's more of a framework that the committee will, like, fill in. Yeah?
No, that's great, because, again, a concern that we had was that, okay, we're going to have a draft, and then there'll be comments, and there'll be a final, and then the committee, and, you know, how is that going to be a collision, but clearly, it's going to be a progressive process, and I think that's great.
That's a good way to put it, yeah.
We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anyone else from the public? What's everyone think about the name? Should it be advisory, should it just be committee and drop the advisory, but then it's CRC, which is the Contract Review Committee?
Yeah, no, we have to think about what other things have the same initials.
Matt, what's your, I'd be interested, because you've been on the board for, as regards, in my mind, an advisory committee, I tend to prefer the advisory committee because it feels like it's more long-term, and it's there to provide recommendations, regardless of what the work is, where a work group seems to me much more temporary and fixed, and then it dissolves when that event is over.
Right, yes.
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 I agree.
Yeah, exactly.
I wouldn't call it a work group, this is too big, I don't think this has ever gone away.
Yeah. So I think if everyone's okay with the coastal resiliency advisory committee, I definitely, you know, read the coastal conservancy's concerns, but I do think advisory committee is suited.
I'm seeing the consensus for that. Is that okay, consensus, Libby?
Yep, that sounds, that sounds fine, maybe just a final vote to settle on the whole thing.
At the end, once we go through everything.
So if you're, so if you're appointed, you're on crack. Is that the point?
Yeah, pretty much.
It's our most entertaining acronym to date, I think.
How are we on the membership layout? I'm good with.
I know, I think there's a lot of people who want to be on it, like, and it makes sense, like Conservation Foundation, and then somebody says, well, why not this group? Just, you know, Matt, you know, from BPAC, you know, advisory group, we let anybody kind of come in and be a part of it from the public, they're not a voting member, but we invite, so if we decided that one nonprofit couldn't be there, they could still be there every time and give input. That's worked really well in BPAC. I'm just kind of throwing a solution out there, if someone feels left out, or, because we can't have 15 or 13 members, what is it now, seven?
Nine.
This is nine. Yeah, nine is a lot.
Yeah, that's what I get worried.
I wouldn't go above nine. Should we drop the must-be year-round residents and say preferred to be year-round residents, or someone who can regularly attend?
However you guys want, on my notes, I just struck out year-round residents and, so that would read must be able to attend or participate in meetings on a regular basis.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm probably going to go to a new way to say it.
So what were you saying about the foundation, keep them specifically named, or use the other language?
Well, they could designate someone that's not specifically part of them, it would be their designate, but as being such a big landholder, I think that it makes a lot of sense.
Okay, and then the other groups, if they want to attend, hopefully they will, they can.
Independent scientific background sounds good, natural resources coordinator sounds good, anybody stop me, I'm just trying to move this along. Oversight and finalize, finalization, I mean, these additions look good to me.
Quick question, on the membership, you have, the admin will be the coastal resiliency coordinator, right, as admin, but is there chairs, or somebody running the meetings and facilitating, will you guys just?
It's going to have to be one, somebody on the committee.
Yeah.
All right, so.
They'll have to establish a chair and vice chair, and will they take their own minutes?
Well, I always try to get them to take their own minutes.
And a secretary?
Actually, one thing that we hadn't talked about yet was, we're forming this committee, but we don't have a coastal resiliency coordinator yet, so are we, will this committee meet without the resiliency coordinator, if it takes a little while to hire?
Probably, there could be at least a couple of organizational meetings, and we can, we'll just have to muddle through, I think, at the beginning of it.
Okay.
So I only ask that, because this is such a huge issue, the facilitation of these meetings, to keep it, you know, everything, it's going to be really important, you know. Good luck to this group.
And you, I think, aren't you on to be appointed?
No, I think.
Oh, is it not you?
It's not me.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe to start, we might need to specify that, I don't know if it makes sense for natural resources to be in lieu of coastal resiliency until, or if we need to do that?
Just let me figure it out.
Okay.
I'll get it figured.
Can we craft a vote on all of these additions and the name?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries unanimously. Okay.
And I think, I think it's important that we, it is a kind of, be forming a framework, some of this is coming out of the work that was done down in New Jersey and New York after Hurricane Sandy, and they put together, so they found that you had to get the public involved, and you had to put together a bunch of various groups in order to have success with this. The troubles that you have is sort of thinking differently, because the federal government doesn't want to think differently, and sort of, so it's really important that you build the consensus underneath, if you're going to try to do things other than, you know, rebuild in the same place, or build it exactly the same way, or not build in certain areas, like, there's a whole bunch of things that have to happen that, you know, I've read a couple of books on it, it was very, the push and pull, coming out of it was very, it was pretty interesting reading, you know, all the different angles on this. And so I think, you know, the meeting that we had at the Nantucket Hotel began the process, but we, as an island, don't have all the answers, we need help, and we need to get the answers, and we need to be able to think big enough. So this is going to take a while, this isn't gonna, you know, it isn't going to be, you know, one document that goes on a shelf and we follow it, it's going to take, this is going to be with us, so.
Ongoing.
Yeah.
So cannabis advisory committee?
Rita and I talked about this a bit, too, and added some things for your consideration that came up at your last meeting when you talked about this. Specifically, the date that's highlighted there, September 1, 2020, it previously said September 1, 2019, and that, that just was because there seemed to be concern at the meeting that by September 1, 2019, wasn't enough time. The issue of nuisances came up as perhaps something that the committee would look at if needed from time to time, and that other highlighted stuff just was discussed at your last meeting, so I just added it in, but it's certainly up to you.
They all look fine to me, does anybody have any comments? Make a motion?
Motion to approve with changes.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion carries unanimously, for CAC.
Yeah, that one wasn't as, that one isn't as good. You needed a better acronym for that one.
Well, maybe the committee can have some fun with that and propose a name change at some point.
Now we have our boards and committees to finalize those.
I did add myself on for Affordable Housing Trust, there had been no one there, but if anyone wants to discuss, happy to.
There's a question mark under parking.
I was going to say, I'll do parking.
Yeah, if you'd like to do parking, I'll show up when I need to or I can, but, and be a member of the public.
Because I picked all things that other people picked.
You've definitely got coastal resiliency.
Yes.
So that would be really good. And Kristi and I had talked about that I'll stay on CPC for this year, and maybe she'll take over next year. Oh, I'm currently on our island home, and I'd like to stay on that to try and figure out what we're doing.
I wanted to stay on CP, on Capital Program Committee another year, unless somebody was dying for it. I tried to offer Matt some gold at the end of the rainbow to get on MPDDC, and he said, give me one more year. And then I'm happy to do the cannabis advisory, I'm happy to do CAC, unless someone's dying to be on it, unless you wanted to be on it. I put my name in there just because nobody filled it out last time.
I would like to be on it, but I think with Board of Health and Affordable Housing Trust, I just don't think I could, so.
Okay.
You're going to have your hands full.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
No, I'm happy to do it. Is there any other, anything that's not been filled?
Did you get all that, Maureen? Yeah, that's fine.
Correct, it's going to be Jason, it sounds like. NCTV is, I think, the only other sort of one that has two sign-ups.
Because I didn't know you signed up for cannabis, did you want to do that?
I don't see her under cannabis, she's, oh, I might miss that.
Yeah, it's her and I.
Oh, there it is, sorry.
I'll do NCTV-18.
Okay.
Because we both signed up for that one as well.
Sure.
Does that work?
That's great.
Okay, so Jason be on cannabis, Kristy will be on NCTV-18.
Yeah. I'm correct.
And Capital Program is, it's only September to December, but it's once or twice a week. It's intense for a short amount of time.
Yeah, it's intense.
Okay. Okay.
Concerned with doing a parking?
Me.
Kristi.
Kristi. I'm sure something else is going to come up.
Definitely.
Like last year, right?
I'm on a roll, I'll keep making work groups.
Okay, so we do have committee reports, don't forget, we still have county, too.
Oh, yeah.
Does anybody have any quick committee reports?
Yeah, I do, the Affordable Housing Trust met, so it's the first meeting since town meeting, and we got right into defining how to address the Neighborhood First program, and we've really looked at dividing it up into four steps and have discussed, four steps being criteria for acquisition, procurement process management, and then strategic implementation. And those are four things that we would like to consider starting a work group to address. That was the main, sort of the main discussion at that meeting.
Anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll turn county over.
So I would like to call to order the April 24, 2019 County Commissioners Meeting, and we will start with the election of officers.
I'll nominate Jason to be the chair.
Second.
Second that?
All the.
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye. Sorry.
Aye.
No, no. It's going to be Jason.
Okay, is there, thank you. Thank you, Rita, good job this year. Is there a nomination for vice chair?
I move to nominate Kristi for vice chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Any public comment for county, that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, there's no new business, is there approval of minutes and payroll and treasury warrants?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll open the public hearing and consider taking a permanent sidewalk and roadway easements for 20 South Water, there's easement one, and easement two is A and B. Is anyone here to speak on that? This is a public hearing. Where are we?
Well, this is a county-initiated action, and there has been some discussion with the property owner, as far as potential settlement goes, and to my knowledge, that has not transpired at this moment, and they are working on perhaps an appraisal, but this has been on your agenda a couple of times now, and I think we're, I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't be ready to recommend a vote on it. The paperwork is in order, anyway, in order for that to happen.
And we can do this before we've finalized the settlement, we've offered a settlement.
Yep, we, those discussions could continue, and we hope that they will.
I would make a motion to move forward with the takings.
If I could just direct your attention to, there actually is a motion in your, I forgot to do that for the town one, but if you could read that, please.
Let me just get to it. A move that we approve and sign the order of taking by eminent domain for straight wharf sidewalk and roadway easements shown on a plan entitled Easement Plan in Nantucket, Mass., prepared for the Town of Nantucket, map 42.3.1, parcel 86, prepared by Bracken Engineering, Inc., dated October 6, 2018. Described therein as easement number one, proposed sidewalk easement, and easement number two, proposed roadway easement, such taking being for sidewalk and roadway purposes, and further to award the amount of $125,000 to the property owner for said taking, and authorize the county council or the county manager to file the order of taking with the Nantucket Registry District of the Land Court within 30 days of this date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion passes, 5-0, and that is for easement one and two, is that what is said in there?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, so that's A and B, thank you.